Good evening and welcome to the October 23rd, 2017 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have five work session discussion topics, but before we get to them, we have a couple of announcements. The first being that the Mayor and Council will not conduct sessions on the following dates due to city Gaithersburg elections. Those dates being next week, October 30th, and the following week, Monday, November 6th. The next regular session of the Mayor and Council will be held on Monday, November 20th, 7:30 PM, right here at City Hall. And then Rob has an announcement for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an announcement for you. Gaithersburg residents will cast their ballots for mayor and two city council members on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. Absentee ballot applications and ballots are available and can be picked up at City Hall or downloaded from the city's website. Early voting sessions will be held at City Hall on Saturday, October 28th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, or Sunday, or and Sunday, October 29th, from noon to 5:00 PM. Polls will be open on Tuesday, November 7th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. For complete election information, go to www.gaithersburgmd.gov/government/elections with an S. Or contact Elections Clerk Lauren Klinger at (301) 258-6310, or email cityelections@gaithersburgmd.gov.
Thank you, Rob. And then the week after the election, we will have a special session here on Monday, November 13th, solely to receive the certification of election results and swear in the newly-elected mayor and city council members. The special session will be conducted pursuant to a motion that we will adopt that very evening. So tonight, we have, as I said, we have five discussion items, and while it seems to cover a lot of ground, I think they're all related. A couple are cultural arts-related, and then we get to Old Town, and then we get to economic development, and I think there's a lot of synergy between them. So we're going to start with our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee report. We have our staff liaison, Shelley Williams and Jim Hain, new Cultural Arts Advisory Committee member to deliver it. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. My name is Jim Hain. I am a member of the Gaithersburg Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and I am delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments and activities of the Cultural Advisory Committee. I am a professional artist and a longtime resident, four decades, here in Gaithersburg. To remind the council, our committee was formed in 2001. For a number of years, the committee included the Art in Public Places Committee, and in January 2015, the Art in Public Places Committee was absorbed into the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. We now provide guidance on the city's public art program, as well as other city arts efforts. It is the mission of the committee to advise the mayor and council, and city staff on arts programs and facilities, in order to enhance the quality of life in Gaithersburg by developing and supporting cultural, social, and economic opportunities that allow artistic expression and creative excellence to flourish and develop to their fullest potential. The committee activates this mission by assembling a robust committee that is dedicated to making the arts and culture accessible to all residents of all ages and all backgrounds. A highlight of fiscal 2017 was the expansion of the committee to include five new members with a broad range of arts and cultural interests and experience. They are Ronaldo Rojas, a community activator and international visual and performing arts producer; Tracy Dorfman, a professional arts administrator with many years of experience in managing and marketing arts and cultural programming; Loretta McNally, board president of the Montgomery Playhouse, an 88-year-old community theater group that has called Gaithersburg its home since 1972, and she's a member of the regional non-professional theater community; Jim Roffus, who is here, a Gaithersburg resident with a strong visual arts background and experience with youth orchestras; and finally, myself, Jim Hain, a former government nonprofit manager turned visual artist late in life. Together with existing members Nanette Haran, Beverly Kowalczek, Anthony Glander, and Lori Yankowski, the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee brings a breadth of experience to advise the mayor and council on arts and culture. The city's public art collection is comprised of 26 art installations on public and private property created by artists of regional, national, and international reputation. These artworks bring prestige and distinction to our community. Last year, the community selected sculptor Jay Hall Carpenter for the creation of a children's gate at Constitution Gardens. You can see the artist's maquette or model on your right, and on your left, the artwork under construction in the artist's studio. The finished product will be six feet tall, including the snail at the top, and the flat panels will be engraved with native images of native plants and animals. Installation of the artwork is slated for April of 2018. Other projects currently in progress are innovation by artist Steve Weitzman. It is a site-specific installation in downtown Crown using art, landscaping, and hardscaping to create an intimate outdoor room dedicated to innovation. Engraved in the center circle of the artwork are quotes by innovators of diverse backgrounds and areas of expertise, including science, math, and the arts. This project is nearly ready to begin and is funded, and will be owned by the developer. We are currently exploring two new areas for public art projects. The first is to create destination artwork that would bolster the city's redevelopment of Old Town and spur economic activity. The second is to install banners on Route 355 and in Old Town that brand the city and our four large signature events. The artwork you see here is an example of quality and life branding that celebrates community characteristics such as green spaces, recreation, local architecture, and the arts. The committee has accomplished two important initiatives last year: the development of a public art fund and a public art visual tour. The public art fund accumulates and provides funds for the city's Arts in Public Places program. When a site is deemed inappropriate for public art, the developer will make a contribution to the fund equivalent to the total amount they would have spent on public art. Currently, the fund has a balance of $31,000, provided by Federal Express, iFly, and Carvana. Lastly, staff completed a new virtual tour of the city's public art collection. We invite you to see it on the Maps page of the city website. This is an ongoing project with GIS. In 2006, the committee worked to create a comprehensive cultural arts master plan and presented it to the mayor and council. Over the last decade, staff and committee have updated this plan for its incorporation into the parks, recreation, and cultural element of the city's master plan. The plan seeks to create high-quality and sustainable cultural facilities and art-infused events, provide diverse cultural and artistic opportunities accessible to all ages, all abilities, and all incomes, increase awareness of the role that the arts and culture play in our community's identity and character, and create a dynamic cultural environment that is an economic engine for the city. Another important initiative undertaken by the committee last year was exploration of a performing arts venue for the city. For years, residents have expressed interest in building a large performing hall, a large performance hall. The committee took the task of creating a feasibility analysis for a performance arts venue. We are still collecting and analyzing data. Our research will answer whether such a facility should be sized to accommodate a traveling Broadway show such as Hamilton, or of a more intimate size like Strathmore's 350-seat amp.
Jim, can I put you on pause for a second?
Sure.
I just want to call everyone's attention to the reference to Hamilton and the image of Hamilton.
They're playing to their audience.
Yes, that you are playing to the audience, and any department heads out, you know, listening or watching, you're best advised to, you know, take note of this and use it in your presentations as well. Thank you.
The mayor does not own stock in the show, by the way.
Thank you. Okay, or maybe a more intimate size like Strathmore's 350-seat amp. Or if there's no need to build a venue, but instead to partner more broadly with the existing entities. As you can see from the slide, committee members are compiling an inventory of performance arts venues within a 50-mile radius of Gaithersburg, conducting interviews with potential facility partners, looking for partnerships that will have a key role in economic sustainability, and evaluating the need and probable niche for such a venue. You'll be hearing more about this effort in the future. So in closing, the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee has four strategic goals for fiscal 2018: manage and finalize public art projects in progress, develop and implement new projects outlined in this presentation, and continue to build and to build the collection and Gaithersburg's reputation as a progressive city with a strong arts presence. After analysis, make recommendations regarding the feasibility of a new performing arts center. Continue to advise and promote the city's cultural arts programs and ensure their accessibility to all, and work to support the city's efforts to infuse arts and culture into city programming and opportunities. Thank you for your attention, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might add.
Jim, thank you very much for the presentation. It's very important to me that the city continue to move forward in establishing our cultural identity. I really like all the directions that you brought up. I wanted to bring up to the public and to everybody here a few conversations that I've had recently with Denise, and some with Tony as well. The first being the destination artwork and the banners that you brought up in your Destination artwork in Old Town is a potential concept for what we do with the big brick wall behind the new apartments. As you all know, when shortly after the apartments were occupied, I took a tour and had a conversation with the property owner and said that that big brick wall is begging for public art, and his answer was, you know, "Bring us your ideas. We're open to anything." And so Denise and Tony and I have had a couple of conversations on this, and I'm really excited about potential things that could be done there. Same with the banners alone, 355. I want, I really think it's important that people driving through the city sort of feel the difference of "I'm in Gaithersburg now," as opposed to not being in Gaithersburg, and I think that the banners can help us get there. One other conversation I had, a long conversation with Denise recently, was pursuant to a request we had for a grant for a pop-up theater company. And while we don't yet have a mechanism to evaluate and administer such a grant program, the request brought up a really good conversation about potential ways that the city can foster pop-up theater companies in the future, one way of which being to sort of be a clearinghouse for potential venues that people can use for these theater productions. Another, perhaps at some point, we could purchase some equipment that pop-up theater companies could use, or they could borrow from us for their performances. I had a really amazing trip this summer to Edinburgh, Scotland, where they have the world's first fringe festival. It's now enjoying, now just finished its 70th year. And to see the way that an entire city gets behind the performing arts in that way, everywhere you walk in the city, it's not just one venue, it's like 700 different venues. It's amazing, and I'd love to see, maybe not quite, we're not quite ready for the Edinburgh scale, but I love the idea of everyone getting behind it and performing arts happening all over the place, and I think there's some opportunity with Gaithersburg. So I hope that the committee will continue these conversations and advise us in some ways we can move that forward. So anyway, I wanted to open this up to everybody else, too.
I'm the liaison of the committee, I've been for quite a while, actually. Before that, I was the liaison to the Art in Public Places Committee as well. So I think I've seen the evolution of the committee, the merging of the missions. All of the things you've talked about are issues that have been shared by the committee. I think the exciting thing is to see the enlarged membership of the committee and the range of perspectives and expertise and talent that the committee has now, and not that we didn't have talent and perspective before, but now we have a broader range of it. So the idea of pop-up spots, I think certainly there's a member of the retail community from the Petersons Company, Lori Yankowski, that's talked about the availability of storefronts at Rio Washingtonian. I think we've heard about the opportunities at possible, potential locations for pop-ups at Lake Forest Mall, and it's actually something that I suggested some time ago, that when we had, when there were vacancies in Old Town, that we might look at some of those places as a place for performance space, or a gallery, a pop-up gallery, something like that, but also potential artist studios. So I think these ideas are really cool. We actually have seen presentations on art that would be, that would appear on that big wall that you're talking about, the crossings. And basically, it would be projected art. This is not a new thing, but it's been increasing in popularity because it's not permanent, but it can use an existing space or service to create a destination that people will come see, and it can be changed on a regular basis. So the only differences, the only issue is that it's art that appears after dark. But then doing things after dark is also has the capability to activate a location, so that would be a good thing for Old Town. But I think you'd also want to figure out something you could do during the day that would also create something on that space. So the Jay Hall Carpenter piece that's going to be installed at Constitution Gardens, I think is going to be really cool. I think that'll be the third piece that we have by Carpenter and the city. He was the sculptor that did the Boer statue at Boer Park, and I think, where else? Is it up front, the City Hall?
This will be the second one.
This will be the second one, okay. Well, he's a well-known artist in the region. If you've been to the University of Maryland, outside the stamp is the sculpture of Jim Henson and Kermit the Frog. So that's particularly notable, so if you haven't seen his work. But this one is very different than the other one. Anyway, it's been a delight to watch how the committee's grown and what they're working on, and certainly, there's no topic, I think, that the committee hasn't touched in terms of cultural arts and opportunities, whether it's photography, graphic art, sculpture, theater, music, et cetera. But also talking about ways to not only promote it, but also ways that we can possibly fund it. So that's a big thing. I think the idea of the searching for a solution to a performing arts venue is going to, you know, we've talked about that before. County of a million people, there's really only one place, large place, and that's Strathmore. I don't think you can count the place in Silver Spring, whatever we call it.
Fillmore.
The Fillmore.
No.
That's not really a place, you know, the Black Rock and the other one in Silver Spring at the Queenie College is relatively small, so about 300 people at any one time. And even in Rockville, the Fitzgerald Theater, I think, holds about 200 people. So, you know, I think there's opportunities for that, given the size of the city, but we need to find partners and sponsors. I think the county could be one like that. You know, we had talked about this years ago as a possible location where MCPS could use for graduations. You'd have to have a pretty big facility, but I think it's worth looking into. Potential partner might be the Fairgrounds. So anyway, that's my perspective as a member. I want to thank the team for the presentation, and I think it summarized everything that's been going on.
Neil.
So I think it's wonderful, all the work you do. In particular, I'm really glad to hear that you're looking for venues for performing arts. First of all, in years past, I've been a regular subscriber to the Alney Theater. I really like professional theater, and it's, I would hope that as you're looking at it, you're kind of joining forces with the economic development team, because one of the things that is very helpful for activating retail and economic areas is anchors, and, you know, while department stores have typically served as anchors in the past, things like libraries and performing arts centers are great additions to not only the cultural atmosphere of the city, but ways to anchor events, where, locations where the family comes for some entertainment and then sticks around for dinner, or to do some shopping, or whatever. So I think pop-ups are great, but hopefully, in the longer term, we're looking at moving, continuing to evolve to the point where we can put a permanent location, hopefully in Old Town or some other part of town that really needs to help. So I think it's wonderful that you're looking at it, and really look forward to the report on what you come up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Not much to add to what's already been said, just to piggyback on what Neil was talking about. A few weeks ago, I believe it was the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, there was some regional group that put out a report on the economic value of investment in the arts. And not to diminish the fact that we support art for art's sake, but it's good to have multiple reasons to support the arts. And so just to echo what Neil was saying, I'll try and find that report. I think I might have sent a copy to Michelle. Might be worth the committee and staff taking a look at, just as an interesting piece of background information. I'm very encouraged by the fact that we have so many new members on the committee and a lot of new energy coming on board to combine with the folks who've been there a while and just get sort of an infusion of new enthusiasm, and so I'm excited about that. I welcome all the new members. And then finally, I just want to give a little shout-out, I guess, to staff, who's really been responsible for this, but at least in my anecdotal experience, I have felt that the performing arts in the city, the programs have really done a great job coordinating in the last year or two with branding and cross-marketing and use of social media and all those things to kind of, you know, it felt, it always, it felt kind of in the past like we had all these great programs, but they were kind of sort of scattered about, and everything just sort of seems to have a much more unified brand and communication strategy. So kudos to all of you. The diversity of events are being marketed in a way that doesn't feel scattered. It just feels like a wonderful collection, a wonderful menu for different people who have different interests, and whatever you're doing there, keep it up.
Thank you.
I'll tell everybody.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Not much to add, other than I enjoy the frequent, robust programming that the city puts on, and keep doing it.
All right. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this topic? If so, we asked if you could keep your remarks, no more than three minutes. State your name and address or neighborhood for the record. Do we have any speakers? Keep looking over at Lenny, but he's not, he's not taking a bite here. He's, okay. Oh, here he goes, here he comes. That's all.
I just want to say, Lenny Levy, 14th Supreme Court. I am the chair of the Old Town Advisory Committee, and I really appreciate your comments that you're going to be looking for things that will enhance the experience of coming to Old Town. We need something, we're going to show, we're going to discuss some progress that's been made within our committee, but the fact that your committee is kind of working in the same thought process is really exciting to us.
Excellent.
And also, I do some playwriting, acting, drawing, so that aspect also is kind of exciting.
No conflict. Any other speakers on this topic? Not seeing any. Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good presentation. Okay, next, we're going to have the annual briefing from the Gaithersburg Book Festival Committee.
Never heard of them.
Never heard of them.
We have a book festival?
Welcome Carolyn Crosby, who is our lead planner, and Jennifer Nicholson, outstanding member of the committee for a number of years.
There better be some Hamilton references.
No, there's book festival.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
They could go. You better be careful what you ask them. They can do lyrics.
I'm sure they can.
We can't mix his two great loves of Hamilton and book festivals. Blow his mind.
Hamilton was a book first, was it not?
It was.
Apparently, it was.
It's a person first.
It was a person even before that.
Person before a book, yeah.
It was based on the churn-out book.
My name is Jennifer Nicholson. I am the media specialist at Quinserd High School and a member of the Gaithersburg Book Festival Committee. The mission of the Gaithersburg Book Festival is to foster an interest in reading, writing, and literary conversation. Our committee aims to foster and promote this mission through the many aspects and programs of the festival. Today, I will report on the activities and impact of our committee's work as it relates to the festival and its programs for fiscal year 2017. The Gaithersburg Book Festival Committee works year-round to recruit dozens of high-quality authors, coordinate public relations and marketing efforts that extend to the entire Mid-Atlantic region, develop and foster partnerships, coordinate a writing competition, develop children's and teen programming, and coordinate standalone ancillary author events throughout the year. Now in its ninth year, the festival is providing volunteer opportunities to more community members than ever. Last year's event drew in more than 300 enthusiastic volunteers who assisted with every aspect of the event. The ancillary author events during other parts of the year allow us to include top authors who are not available for the festival itself, and to engage in partnerships with literary organizations in the community to put on the event. Finally, the festival is impacting thousands of attendees of all ages who come each year to be inspired, to learn about new authors and topics, and to fuel their interest in The 2017 Gaithersburg Book Festival statistics are encouraging and evidence that the festival remains on track for continued growth and success. Attendance continues to rise, as do the number of volunteers and sponsors. The festival is increasingly successful in attracting bestselling and award-winning authors, as well as followers on social media. And again, as in past years, an overwhelming percentage of those surveyed said they definitely planned to return. Mark your calendars now for our next festival being held on Saturday, May 19th, 2018. The committee's key goals for the 2018 festival are to match the quality of authors that the community has come to expect, to continue to get the word out to the many people out there who still do not know about the festival, to provide an opportunity to local authors and literary organizations to showcase their work and share their message, to look for more ways to interest and involve teens and tweens. As of now, author recruitment is well underway. Applications to participate are available. Writing workshops are being developed, and the high school short story contest is launched and open for submissions. Thank you for the opportunity to present the work of our committee. May I answer any questions?
Sure. Thanks for the presentation. Can you please repeat the date of the next book festival?
It is Saturday, May 19th, 2018.
Okay.
And where is it located, again?
It is right here on the City Hall grounds.
Oh, okay, well, sure.
And on a scale of 1 to 100, how much, 100 being the most, how much would you urge people who've never come to the book festival to come to the book festival?
110.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I just echo all the love and appreciation for the event and all the folks who are involved in it. I'm kind of curious how you have found tying the standalone author events that we have throughout the year back to the festival, and if there's any sense, or I doubt there's actual data, but if there's at least a sense as to how using that as a marketing platform for folks who show up to the standalone event to get them to come out to the festival, or folks who normally come out to the festival, are they the ones coming out to standalone events when we have an author? I know we've had a couple of pretty high-profile standalone events over the last couple of years in between the book festivals. I'm just curious to your sense about how those work and how they integrate with the general festival activities and marketing plan.
I can answer this if you want. I can, I have.
Why don't you go have a seat over there?
Jane, you take a shot at it first, then I'll...
Well, I think that we, through our ancillary events, since the authors, we have had a wide variety of authors at our ancillary events, and we tend to draw sometimes a different crowd than we necessarily get here. So particularly with the last event we just had with Chimamanda Ngozi Adichie, which was a phenomenal event, which had great attendance, and I think drew a different crowd than we typically see here, a much more diverse crowd than we see at our book festival, and I hope that that will translate into many of those people who might not have visited our book festival for it will hopefully think about it and come this year.
Can I tell you, at that event, we got at least 50 new sign-ups to our newsletter, and, I don't know, a dozen or so to our social media feeds. There's definitely, it's hard to quantify entirely, that question, but by those measures, there's something that's happening.
It also is developing our partnerships with a lot of the local literary organizations. It gave us an opportunity... It gave us an opportunity to really work with them in putting on this event, and that can help down the road when we want to, I mean, it should be able to help us get authors, actually, and put on events where they have access and we don't, or vice versa.
I agree, it helps broaden our marketing reach as well, because we have people, you know, well within Montgomery College and MCPS and the libraries who are now that much more familiar with the book festival.
I think an important part of this, which I don't know that, yeah, needed to mention in the, in the report, but I think it's an important part we should acknowledge, is our partner since like the third year or second year, is Politics and Pros, which has a nationwide reputation. I think that they bring a clientele as well, a community of readers and book buyers. And I'm assuming that they're willing to continue this relationship and support because they actually, it works for them in a business relationship as well. So I think that's important, and clearly, they've been useful and helpful in us getting authors, so I hope that that partnership will continue, and that perhaps we can convince them to find a site in Gaithersburg where they could open a satellite store, perhaps in a restaurant, if we had a Bus Boys and Poets here somewhere in the city, that they operate the bookstores in the Bus Boys and Poets stores throughout the region, so something else again where there's an intersection between economic development and the cultural arts, so.
Definitely. We'll keep bugging them. Yvette?
Thank you, thank you ladies for your presentation. Two things, so one, this past year, my grandchildren came with us to the book festival and saw their favorite author. I thought my granddaughter was going to burst, Dave Roman, so she was super, super excited. So I noticed that the Children's Village and activities are increasing, and we're seeing more and more kids attend the event, so this is terrific. Also, just for the public, could you give us a brief synopsis of how you guys go about choosing authors for the event?
Do you want to? Can, I mean, I can do it, but if you don't feel like you know.
We have an author recruitment team that work with publishers to choose, to find out which authors are available to come to our book festival. Would you like to add to that?
We also have an application process, so at the same time that the recruitment committee is looking for the top authors with a new book out, who they think will bring attendees, we put out an application for anybody who wants to be considered as a presenter. So from the two, coming at it from the two angles, we end up filling all of the slots depending on who accepts, who declines, and then what genres we have spaces left in, and then we'll fill those in with some of the applicants.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's a very well-connected recruitment committee, so they do a great job.
Do you take suggestions from staff?
Yeah, absolutely, oh, yeah, 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 we love suggestions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Neil?
Look, it's a great event, I enjoy going, I enjoy the chance to read books that I haven't been familiar with before, I really enjoyed the NICS last year and introducing the author, who's a terrific person. We need more science fiction, though. There is, we just have had a shortage of science fiction books, and so I'm putting in my request right now, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there's a local science fiction club, there are a lot of authors in the DC area, there's even a convention for the DC metro area, which is held here in Gaithersburg every October. So, you know, maybe we could get something going a little more out of this world, okay? All right, thanks.
Fair point.
Very fair point.
Rob?
I don't really have anything substantive to say, Mr. Mayor, but I'm sure you'd be angry at me if I didn't say anything good about the book festival. It's great, by the way.
I wouldn't be angry at you.
No more than usual.
No more than usual.
We just continue the mockery and derision.
All right, all right. Do we, do we have anybody from the public who'd like to comment on?
Actually, I, one observation in recruiting there, we have two authors that we've had before, one was very important in our first book festival, Alice McDermott has a new book out, she's touring now with that, so it would be great to have Alice back, maybe I can help with that. And Tim Wendell has a new book out, and he's been, he's been here three times, I believe, as well, this one isn't completely, this one isn't about sports.
It's a memoir.
It's a memoir, but it's, but, you know, it's doing well, I think, so. Two authors that I hope we can see again this year. But I think, you know, the authors that we have have been a big part of our efforts to recruit new authors as well, they talk it up and they seem to like to come back, so I think.
Absolutely.
And that's largely due to the way the staff has, has done the whole thing, and I, you know, the one remark I remember from the first year that we did this, is several authors asked, "How many years have you been doing this?", because they couldn't believe how well organized it was. They said, "You guys must have been doing this for a long time." So that, I mean, that's a credit to the originator, and, but mostly to the staff, because they do the work, so. And the way you round up the volunteers and train them and get them to do the, do the hard work, I think is what makes the festival such an important event for us.
I think we should have this at every one of our meetings, but nobody else probably agrees. Do we have any other, any people in the public, in the audience, who'd like to speak on this topic? Lenny, come on up.
Thank you, Lenny Levy, 14th Supreme Court. I just want to add, I volunteered a couple times for this, and for those listening that, "Oh, there are over 300 volunteers", there's always room for more volunteers, and you wind up with a really nifty t-shirt, a free lunch, and a chance to meet some authors, who I always find fascinating.
Excellent points. All right, thank you guys very much, appreciate the update. Next, we're going to have our annual briefing from the Old Town Advisory Committee, and we'll have...
I hope we get to hear from Lenny.
Lenny will be up here, as well as Tom Lonergan, our staff liaison.
Good evening, I think everybody knows who I am by now. I gave an hour training today, so you need some order here. Okay, on behalf of the Old Town Advisory Subcommittee, we're happy to be before you again, and I think we can give you more progress than I have in my prior visits with you this year. The committee is made up of this list of people, I'm not going to read them to you, our liaison from the council is Yvette, and the group is very engaged, and we're hoping that we can make Old Town the active center that we all want it to be.
I would just add that our membership continues to grow in this committee, Ian, Jeff, a couple of new members have come on in the last few months, and we also remember Linda Hansen for her many, many years on this Subcommittee. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine, this is a team effort. Okay, who are we? We're an interdisciplinary Subcommittee comprised of residents, business owners, and property owners, and we like to think of ourselves as the eyes and ears of Old Town. What we do, we advocate for Old Town, we look for opportunities for economic development, we look for efforts to revitalize the area, we're concerned and always get a report from the city police on safety and security, and we would like there to be aesthetics that make the Old Town area even more attractive. What we do, our charges and goals, in accordance with the city's goal of establishing Old Town as the civic, social, and cultural heart of Gaithersburg, our committee was established to promote and assist the mayor and city council in coordinating the revitalization efforts. Obviously, Old Town has been here for a while, or it wouldn't be called Old Town, but I always say, if I tell somebody I'm going to Old Town this weekend, I don't want them to look at me and say, "Oh, you're going over to Virginia and Alexandria?", I want them to say, "Oh, yeah, Gaithersburg, yeah, we really like that." We want to promote and support the ongoing redevelopment of Old Town, and we have some of that going on this year. We advocate and promote Old Town businesses and encourage continued growth, and we assist with establishing Old Town as the civic, social, and cultural heart of Gaithersburg. As I said, I think we've made more progress this year than in the prior years when I've appeared before you. Archstone, Hidden Creek, and other Old Town apartment communities are over 90% leased, a very positive factor. 16 South Summit Avenue is in design to become our new police headquarters. We have several new restaurants, including Rincon Pirloano, did I get that right?
That's how I'd say it.
Okay. Green Growlers, which was formerly Growlers, and is under new ownership now, they're reopened, and hopefully it'll be a solid chain of being open. And La Casita, which replaced Roy's Place, they're all open for business. La Casita was empty, or Roy's Place was empty for years, so it's really welcoming that at the end of what most people consider Old Town, we have functioning and evidently doing well every time we go past, doing well, and hope that continues. The mixed-use project at the former Fishman site has received concept plan approval, so that'll be coming on board. The, I've always said, we need a critical mass of people to make Old Town function, so that businesses will want to be here. So that opening, and then the location on the Y site now being open, help create that critical mass. But in order for it to be really functional, we need to figure out, how do we get people from other parts of the city and beyond the city to come into Old Town? How do we attract them and make them want to be there? The assembly of land parcels at Route 355 and Summit Avenue continues to materialize, and the Old Town Park Plaza at the corner of Summit and Diamond is under construction and expected completion in November, and that was designed as the type of amenity that will bring people into Old Town from the city and from beyond. It's going to have, I know you've all seen it, but it's going to have a water function, a water feature, that we hope parents will bring their children, there are going to be places for them to sit, to relax, so we're hoping that'll really get some people in here. And as was said before by the, by the council, people come here, I think Neil, you said this, people come here, and they go there for a while, and they're going to look for somewhere to shop, somewhere to eat, which is a very positive thing for Old Town. We do have challenges. The commercial rents are lower than the citywide average, citywide average in Old Town. The demographics and traffic counts are not sufficient to attract regional and national retailers, my understanding, and Tom can confirm this, since this is what he does, but that they'll look and they'll go, "There's not enough traffic there. We want somewhere, even if we're going to be in Gaithersburg, we want it to be somewhere where there's more people coming." So that's what we need to focus on. Crime and the perception of crime, and every year we get a report from Dan Lane from the Police Department, and it's the perception of crime more than the crime. Dan tells us, "This is where we're at, these are the stats on, on crime, and the problem is people perceive that there's crime." So we need to get that perception changed to the reality that the crime isn't any worse in Old Town than it is anywhere else. The Archstone ground floor retail remains unoccupied, and we've had a couple discussions on that. And we need to sustain interest in the new apartments without, it'll be difficult to sustain interest in the new apartments without stronger retail restaurant variety. We don't want people moving into Gaithersburg and going, "Well, I don't see anything to do here, I'm going down to Rockville, I'm going down to Bethesda, I'm going up to Germantown", we need that stronger retail restaurant variety, so when they move here, they'll stay here, and they'll find things to do. The topics that we cover in our meetings was the Business Improvement District law, legislation before the state, and that was passed and became law. What that'll do is if the merchants in Old Town want to create a business improvement district, they'll be able to, easier than they could have in the past. And I've seen these function in DC, and it's a positive, but at least now, if they want to do it, they can do it. Not conforming window signage, we discussed the fact that there's a lot of signage in the shops along Summit, Diamond, that are not conforming, and they need, those laws of how much window signage you can have were created, so it looks professional, it looks nice down there in Old Town. And so if it's not conforming, then it's not as attractive as it could be. We discussed the Old Town Park Plaza, I already discussed that. We discussed the 355 bridge art and beautification, making that, instead of just being concrete, making it into an amenity that will attract people to go look at it, and then come into Old Town to do some shopping and some restaurant visiting. The Fishman Garage public parking component, there was a discussion about, would the people building, once they get concept approval, and build it, would they allow some public parking, and my understanding is it's going to be very difficult to do. So what we need to do throughout Old Town is, where else can people park? We want them to come, we got to have them, people are not going to walk, I mean, I've walked here, it's about two miles, I'm not going to do that on a regular basis, I'm going to drive, as most people are. So where am I going to park my car when I get here? The moderately priced dwelling unit exemption in Old Town, so we had a discussion on that. And in general, I think the conclusion was that we probably should continue that. The Old Town District Master Plan Review, we had a meeting where we went through the current master plan, had the discussion, and the conclusion was that it probably needs modification, but it does not need to be redone at this point. And then our last meeting with Denise Kaiser and Nancy Wild was on parks and recreation activities in Old Town, I think everybody was impressed by how much is being done, and the potential to do more. And as far as, Judd, you were talking about, what public art can we put on the back of the big brick wall? Denise has some wonderful ideas on that, and you've discussed it with her, but Denise has really looked at that and has come up with some really good ideas. Our priorities for the coming year, final approval for the mixed-use development at the Fishman site, programming for the new Old Town Park Plaza, it's got a water feature, but if we can do more, we'll get more people to come to it, and again, then they'll go visit our restaurants and do some shopping. Researching opportunities for additional public parking, I've already said, we need it, and we got to find places to put it. Ensuring the benefits of the enterprise zone remain beyond the expiration date, so we want that to continue. Assemblage opportunities both along 355, as well as other sites within Old Town. What can we do to bring space for new businesses to come in? I really like the idea of pop-ups, pop-up for theater, pop-up for art, I mean, we go to little communities, and I kind of look around, we were in Lambertville, New Jersey, and they had a lot of little antique shops and art galleries, and people were just walking around. We also went to New Hope, Pennsylvania, they're right across the river where Washington crossed to Delaware, that's actually where it is. But anyway, so it was all kinds of little funky shops, in fact, one place was called Funky Stuff. And just giving people opportunities to come in and do something, so we get the businesses that'll draw the critical mass that we need to make Old Town successful. Continuing to actively pursue new residents and office tenants to support the Old Town retailers and restaurants, and a proactive pursuit of quality destination retailers and restaurants, which provide a greater variety of options for neighborhood restaurants, employees, and visitors. And at this point, do you have any questions?
Lenny, thank you very much, good, very thorough presentation. I, I agree with, with your initial premise, that there's, there's more to report this year than there's been, and it's very exciting to all of us, you know, as you know well, for the last 10 years plus, Old Town has been the top priority for this council, and, you know, remains right there at the top with that Lake Forest and 355, and, you know, we appreciate all the time and effort you guys have put into this and the advice you've given us over the years. These are all good directions, and, you know, appreciate it and hope you guys continue. Questions, comments?
So my first question is, we go back to the challenges. Commercial rent's lower than citywide average, I guess, you know, in some ways that is a challenge, but it would also seem to be an enormous opportunity for some businesses to come in here, realize that the kind of space they could get for the price, and the opportunity that, you know, the local demographics might have for them for a particular type of shop. You know, when you look at other, other cities in the country that have had similar kind of commercial districts that are on the, kind of the valley of activity, this is, this is how they reactivate- this is, this is how they reactivate something, by taking advantage of, uh, lower rents and lowest cost, lower costs of operation. And in fact, usually arts districts or arts areas usually come into like warehouse districts and other places that are, that are vacant and occupied because it's cheaper for them to, to begin to their, do their work there. So I, I think we have to think about the commercial rent level as being an opportunity for attracting certain types of businesses rather than always talking about it as a challenge. And certainly the, the owners want to make as much money as they can. But, you know, whatever the market rate is, is what they're gonna bear. So I think we have to talk about that differently.
Okay, good point.
But, uh, everything else, I think you're right. It, it's great to hear the, the activity that's going on. Um, you know, I have a special interest because, uh, my daughter-in-law moved into Old Town uh, a year ago and they really love being here. They love walking to the restaurants, they love walking to the bakeries, they love walking to the, to the parks that we have, you know, in, in the area. So, um, you know, and I know there are other families that feel the same way. And, and I think, uh, the success of some of our newer restaurants is, is important to that. Um, and so we're hoping that maybe something will happen on the first, first floor of Archstone as well. Maybe you have some news for us, I don't know.
Neil?
So, uh, thank you for the presentation and all the good work over the years. Maybe at some point, we could do a retrospective and look at Old Town 20 years ago versus today to remind people that even though it's not where we want it to be yet, it's come a long way from where it once was. Um, thanks to your, your, your good work and the rest of the city's good work. My thought on Old Town is, um, you know, kind of segueing from what Mike was just saying and the comment about his, uh, the next generation of his family being here. And I saw a presentation recently saying that one of the biggest challenges for the DC metro region is attracting and retaining millennials. You know, the boomer generation was very attracted to this region. But, you know, I know my kids don't live in Montgomery County at this point and it, it saddens me because I would like to see more of them. Um, and I'd like it to be more attractive to them. And, uh, affordable housing, uh, you know, for, especially for people in their twenties and thirties, just getting started is a, is a big plus. Um, restaurants, nightlife, things along those lines. So, um, what I'd like to see more of and, uh, from, from you folks is kind of a strategic look at, rather than try to be everything for everybody, uh, is, you know, how are we gonna focus? Who, who's the audience? Is it millennials? Is it, um, you know, people new to the country, you know? Or, you know, what's the right approach? Is it an arts district? I think there's many ways to go, but if we try to do everything, it's more of a challenge. So, uh, anyway, I, I, you know, I think that making Gaithersburg a home for the next generation is, is one good way to look at it, but your, your mileage may vary. So look, look forward to see what you come up with as time goes by. Again, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lenny, thank you for the presentation. Tom, thank you for, uh, the help you gave, Lenny, and for all the work. Um, for all the work that, that both the committee and your office, Tom, do in fulfilling the council's, I, I think, pretty clear guidance that, uh, we want to see good things happening in Old Town in, in the recent past. A lot of momentum. I, at least I've seen a lot of momentum about what's going on there. So I commend you, you, Lenny, and your group for, for the sage wisdom and guidance provided. Tom, for your organization and, and the work that it does. Um, and I'll, I'll say it again, uh, as I've said it before, I'd like to challenge everyone to think creatively. Think about what more we can do, um, to realize what I think is pretty much a consensus desire for Old Town, which is to make it, um, more vibrant, bring a, a density of population here that can support nightlife, businesses, um, food, um, retail establishments and whatnot. Um, you know, and I'm firmly committed to that. You know, we've got other areas of the city that are, are, are growing. Uh, we have other great, um, commercial areas in the city, but I think that, that Old Town is the heart of our city and we need to focus on that as we have been doing and, and need to keep doing that to the future.
Right.
Thank you.
I'll echo all the nice things that have been said. Thank you, Lenny. Thanks to all the committee members. And, uh, as Tom mentioned, uh, at the beginning of the presentation, as with the cultural arts committee, it's nice to see new members coming in. I think, you know, across the board in different committees, we're seeing this sort of new energy and, um, new commitment, a new round of volunteers sort of coming in to participate with the folks who've been here for a while. And it's nice to see that, um, you know, and I think something is happening there, uh, that's, that's, uh, that that is a reflection of. I think part of it is that, um, you know, as Lenny said, there's a lot more to report this year because, in my view, we're in a, a transition period that's sort of leading to inevitably all these good things that we want to have happen for Old Town. That doesn't mean we should rest on our laurels and just let it happen by inertia. We need to work at it. But this report is a reflection of all those things that are already in progress. Things that we talked about for, you know, 10 years or more are now really starting to happen in some places. And again, we can't take it for granted. We have to keep working at it. But it's, it's a very exciting time. And I think in the next year or two, as the committee continues its work and as the city continues its work, we're gonna see the realization of a, of a lot of these things that have been, uh, referenced in the report and more.
Thank you.
Let me, let me just jump in real quick. I need to thank Tom and Sharon Disck. We have a committee, but they're the ones that are doing the hard work. They're the ones that tell us, this is what we need to discuss and they do a great job for us.
Yes, they do. Yvette?
Thank you. So I agree with everyone and including you about Tom and Sharon. And just to say, this committee, committee is, um, growing and it's very robust. So it's nice to see, um, more, um, ideas and suggestions and things coming along. So we're excited about what's, um, happening and what's gonna be happening in the future in Old Town.
Excellent. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this topic? Not seeing any? Okay, well, we thank you all. We thank you very much. Tom, you're here for the next couple, so.
Sticking around.
Yeah, you're sticking around. Lenny, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Next, I'd like to invite Henry Bernstein up to join Tom Lonergan and we will have our annual briefing from the Economic and Business Development Committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Happy to introduce Henry Bernstein from Sheer Partners, a committee member, to give the annual briefing.
Welcome, Henry.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's great seeing you all. I, uh, not sure why Tom gave me the honor of coming to address you all tonight. I have this bad feeling that he went down the list and finally got to somebody who was, I'm just kidding. Um, I would like to.
Correct.
I would like, I would like to say, I would like to say, um, and echo the accolades of the staff. And I can tell you that from my experience, and I think many of you know that formerly I was the Deputy Director for Economic Development for Montgomery County before I retired 12 years ago to move into the private sector. And one of the things when I retired that I did was, I swore off any public meetings after the close of business, um, of the day. And economic development, people need to be very persuasive. And so, uh, both Tom and Sharon, you know, were able to persuade me to come out tonight and address you. And that was, that was, that was quite a feat because.
We're honored that you made an exception to that rule.
It was a threat.
So I, I think that, uh, our committee maybe is a little bit different than, um, what you've, what you've heard tonight. Um, and, um, the, you can see that, um, we have a, a really diverse, um, committee of, of people that represent the real estate community, but different segments of the real estate community. Um, small business, large business. We have a member from Medun represented. And, um, then also there's residents. There's people that show up to the committee meeting that just say, you know, we're here to listen and hear what you guys are, are kind of opining about, if you will. So it's a, it's a, it's a really, it's a really great group. And I, I have to say that I, I actually requested, um, Tom to, to come, you know, to a meeting myself to, to kind of check it out. And, um, I am heavily involved in the, um, Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber and I chaired the Economic Development Committee there. And, you know, we have speakers come in and we talk about significant topics of the day relative to economic development up county, of which this is a, a piece of. Um, but e- even that committee, the topics that we discuss and the opinions that the staff is asking us to give relative to a bunch of different issues that, you know, you'll, you'll see them here. And I, I didn't really prepare remarks or prepare to go through a PowerPoint presentation. I'm a little bit more of an ad libber, if you will. So I'm sure we're gonna go through the slides, but if you don't mind. Um, you know, we, we talk about zoning issues. We've got a lot of personalities, um, on the committee, of which, um, uh, I know that Neil, I guess you're the, I think you're the liaison. Ryan's liaison committee. Sorry. Ryan and Neil have come to meetings. Neil, most recently, you know, my memory goes back, you know, a week is about all good, but.
Guess Neil has more free time.
But, um, you know, we, we really get into, you know, the nitty-gritty of things ad nauseam. And I think, I think, and, and your other staff come, uh, Ron comes and, uh, your Planning Director comes and, of course, Sharon's always there. And, you know, we, we beat things up pretty well. And then we hope that, um, Tom and Sharon bring those messages to you guys because, you know, we're all very concerned about what goes on relative to economic development. Because it's really the lifeblood of, 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 we believe, of what goes on in the city. So let's see what I usurp here. So, um, I, I think, I think obviously relative to economic development, um, you know, it's vitally important that the city have a growing, it's a sustainable and growing tax base. You know, there's, that's about the, you know, we've all, my, my motto was always, you know, it's about jobs and taxes. And, you know, that's the way we provide services to our citizens. And if it gets too expensive, then we've got a big problem on our hands and people are gonna want to continue to come here. So, um, I think, you know, we try to focus on issues that are key to the city, that are gonna, uh, keep the city attractive to, um, uh, businesses and, and, and attractive, and make it an attractive place to grow and expand. And, you know, I went through this process in Montgomery County where, you know, we talked about permitting and zoning and things like that. And everybody would always say, oh, we haven't changed the zoning code in 50 years. You know, like sitting there going, well, why? You know, and, and, you know, this seems to be, you know, something that, that, that the mayor and council are willing to look at, are willing to do on a constant basis. And, you know, that's refreshing. And I think from the economic development standpoint, that the reason why that I wanted to be involved is because I, I feel like you all get it. I think that, you know, that it's, it's something that if you don't pay attention to it, if you don't keep trying to kind of keep up with the times, that, um, you know, you're, you're not gonna be able to move forward. So I, you know, I, I can't say enough about, you know, how I feel about that. So obviously, the city, you know, has some great strengths. Uh, you know, the workforce, location, transit, uh, the incentive program. Uh, I can't tell you how significant that is, that even though it's not, I, I know it's a lot of money for the city, but it's not, you know, this tremendous amount of money. But I think it illustrates and shows that you, that you care. And I can tell you from my experience dealing with and talking to thousands of CEOs throughout Montgomery County, throughout the state of Maryland, throughout the region, that, you know, when a, when a jurisdiction steps forward and, and shows that they care, it, it's, it's extremely meaningful. So, you know, I would, I would encourage everything you, in any way possible that you can keep the toolbox program going and expand it some where you can. Um, I think that, um, you know, we have some issues.
That's the next topic. That's coming, that's coming up next.
But, you know, we, we talked about some strategic initiatives relative to life sciences, some other things. You guys listened and bumped up a little piece of it here and there. And, you know, that, it really, it really does resonate. So, you know, please, please stay on that. And, you know, I'm saying these things as it's coming from me, but I think everybody on our committee agrees, you know, that, um, what you're doing and the way you're doing is the right, is the right way. And everybody really values the opportunity on the committee to, you know, make their commentary and then to also hear that, you know, things get enacted, if you will. Um, so challenges are, um, are big. And they're not, of course, Gaithersburg-centric. They're, they're county-centric, they're state-centric, they're region-centric. But, you know, we do have a soft office market. And, um, you know, that means obviously high vacancy rate, although the city has not as high a vacancy rate as some of the other areas. But, um, there hasn't been a lot of, of, or any spec construction of office space. And, um, you know, I think that the way you keep the burden off the residential community is, is, you know, to, to keep the commercial community growing. And also, you know, we want to attract as many high-paying jobs as possible. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, that, um, that the office space is shrinking and you don't need as much per person and all those things. But if you look at what's going on, you know, and then again, this is me talking, but the, in the Washingtonian area, for example, you've got rents escalating, you know, to a point where, where banks can, uh, and lenders can finance them. And you've got people that, you know, want to be in those newer buildings and their occupancy rates are really high. And, you know, that, I think is, it's pretty telling because there is almost 0% vacancy in those buildings in the Washingtonian area. So, um, you know, I, I think that speaks for itself. The, um, idea of the dwindling lab space inventory, uh, it is an area that I have a great expertise in. We have a, uh, 3% or less vacancy rate in the lab arena. And that's significant because, um, lab space is expensive to build and therefore there's more real estate tax that comes from it. And, um, uh, in addition to that, the jobs associated with lab space are, are extremely high-paying jobs. And it's an industry sector that we hold a, a significant piece of and we need to keep growing that community. But without facilities for companies to expand in, you know, we've got, you know, we've got an issue. Um, so, you know, I would, I would encourage that. And I think, again, the committee, you know, the committee's very interested in addressing, um, that issue as well, and we do. Maybe, maybe, I'm, I'm not as well-versed on the, on the Old Town, but I, I think we've.
We've covered it.
We, we've covered it already. Um, it is something, you know, something that's discussed within the committee. And, um, we have, you know, people in the committee that live in Old Town that, you know, address that. And so just a, a brief, um, uh, look at, you know, some of the things that we've covered and it's not all of them, but, you know, the pad folks from V F Saul come in for the breakfast. Uh, we've, we've, uh, we've beat up the, um, uh, Washingtonian plan pretty well for the, for, for the senior housing facility. And I know you guys are grappling with that to some degree, I think, or it's already been approved. And, you know, the big issue there was, you know, commercial versus residential. And, you know, we, I think on the one hand, everybody understands it's hard to give up commercial. But I, I know the developer had a big issue because they've, they've been, had that land, they've been holding that land for many, many years. Um, but we had a good lively discussion about that, about Kentlands, about the sturt neighborhoods. Talked a lot about First Field Road. We had ULI folks come in and, you know, that was a great enlightening discussion. We talked about affordable housing. And, um, very meaty conversation on the last, uh, the last meeting and a meeting prior to that on Lake Forest Mall. And I'm sure there's a lot more to come on that. And I think, you know, that's one area that you guys really have your work cut out for because I've never seen anything that, quite that, quite that complicated in my 30 or 40 years hanging around. So, um, these are the priorities that, um, I guess, Tom, if you want to get into them at all. You gotta say something, so.
The mall, obviously revitalization of the corridor continues to be a priority for the committee next year. Old Town as well. The enterprise zone will be expiring in the summer of 2018 and we need to determine how we're going to hopefully hold on to some of the benefits of the enterprise zone without the formal designation of the enterprise zone. Uh, we have a new website for economic development yet again, coming online next year. And of course, further diversifying our economy. You can conclude.
I conclude. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Um, thank you guys for the presentation. Um, certainly appreciate, uh, the work and the, as well as the priorities outlined. Uh, Neil, go right ahead.
Sure. So, look, it's a great committee, as Henry said. I actually was coming to the committee as a member of the committee for two years before joining the council. I find it to be informative and enlightening and it's, you know, a large part, as has been said, due to the good work of the staff. You know, you know, there aren't that many committees where every meeting, there's a major topic, there's a lot of background material, there's outside speakers brought in. I mean, it's a really meaty group and that's, I think, why it's in such demand. In fact, I believe there are no vacancies on the committee. And there's probably a waiting list because I know of at least one or two people that would love to get on and, you know, hoping that somebody moves out of the state or something in order to make room. So, so, yeah, I just, I don't think there's more to say. I think, I'd like to point out that Henry and chair partners have been very active in helping the city and the county with the lab space vacancy. And, you know, Tom and Sharon have been part of that task force.
As well as you.
As well as me, in order to try to figure out how on earth, you know, I'm mostly there to ask hard questions and, you know, let the people who know what they're talking about figure out a way around this, whether there's incentives or how to do it. It's a sticky problem because as, as was said, it's very expensive to build lab space. And the kind of buildings that are appropriate for lab space are also equally appropriate to just warehouse and, you know, uses that are less attractive to us, but require much less investment by the, by the owners of the building. So, but we need more lab space. And so I'm sure that this committee and the other groups and the staff people will continue their good work at figuring out the answers to the sticky questions. And by next year, we'll have an answer on the Lake Forest issue, I'm sure, as well. All right. Well, we'll see.
We'll see.
Let's hope. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Nothing much to add, other than I really enjoy being the committee liaison. No, all joking.
Now you know why I don't talk to these people.
It's all right. I did miss the last meeting. All joking aside, you know, I've, I've really appreciated the opportunity to be part of many of the discussions of the committee over the last couple of years. And there's a lot of brain power in that committee, too. So it's nice, not that there isn't in other committees, but like, you know, you're grappling with these complicated issues of economic development and how they interplay with other issues of city policy and priorities. And it's nice to be able to take a lot of the output of that committee and bring it to the mayor and council and bring it to the planning commission and, you know, have Tom and Sharon bring it back to the rest of staff. So we really appreciate all the work that you all do. And, you know, on a personal note, I appreciate your comment at the beginning of the presentation that we're a city that gets it, so to speak. I think we pride ourselves on that, being nimble enough and having enough foresight to understand that all of these other things that we've heard wonderful presentations about tonight and on other nights are all connected to economic development. If we don't get that right, we won't be able to do any of this other stuff. So thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Rob?
Mike? I just wanted to say that I think the committee and its liaison Neil do a great job. It's one of the, did I miss something? No. Just kidding, Ron. This is actually one of the committees I've been wanting to attend. I attended one when I first came onto the council. It's been, it's had a difficult time for me, but I'm going to try to make it. So, thanks.
Mike?
Yeah, thanks for the report. I think it hits all the high points. It is an impressive committee. It's been interesting, the years I've been on the council, to see the change in turnover and the kind of expertise that comes. I think we have broad and real good, real good expertise on a number of issues. So, and then I think the focus on, on the sustainable economy here, building a sustainable employment economy is pretty important here. I mean, certainly retail and commercial development is important, but the retail world is so kind of in flux that I think our focus on good paying jobs, professional jobs, you know, small, the kind of industry that's appropriate for what we have here is, is good. So I think we got a lot to look forward to and certainly we have some challenges, but I think we have a committee and staff that they're going to help us tackle those issues quite well. So no concerns.
Thank you for what you do.
All right. So do we have anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on this topic? Not seeing any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Henry.
I will.
Tom? Thank you very much, Henry. Tom, now it's just you. Economic development incentive program update. This is our last discussion topic for the evening.
This is it. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Always nice to be back for this annual briefing on, on the incentive programs that we use in the economic development division. Getting started, obviously, as we say every year, these programs, the economic development toolbox program that is, is designed to provide a diversified economic incentive that can be broadly applied to existing businesses and eligible commercial building spaces. By existing businesses, that means in general, we're not referring to startups. This consists of a program of one-to-one matching grants directed toward businesses that exhibit growth potential and provide stable, well-paying jobs. Again, not industry specific, but we use it for a variety of industries that, like we continue to say, helps to broaden and expand the city's job base. Matching grants, tenant fit up, that means the work that goes into improving space, that is the most common, most popular grant request from businesses and property owners, but also job training, commercial signage, interior demolition assistance, ADA upgrades, utility upgrades, storefront and landscaping here in Old Town, and of course, custom. If you've got a grant request that doesn't meet any of these criteria, we do consider custom requests. We did modify the program a little bit within the last year. After almost eight years, the toolbox program has had demonstrated success and further distinguished the city from competing locations. Staff's assessment of toolbox applications and awards to date did provide insight on the market. And amendments were implemented to better attract target industries and support properties in need of new investment. Very quickly, there was a maximum benefit for any single applicant to $50,000 over the life of the business. Now, we still have the $50,000 cap, but we do allow a second tranche after five years to support expansion within the city, meaning that if they agree to extend their lease, do another round of significant investment, we would consider a second round of funding. Tenant fit up grant, we did reduce the threshold from being empty for two years to one year, recognizing downtime, that's typically less than two years anyway. And the previous category maximum was $25,000. We did raise that to $50,000, meaning that an applicant could just apply for T I allowance and, or tenant fit up allowance, and we would allow up to $50,000. And that is for Old Town space, bio lab space, and for facilities older than 25 years, that's a $4 enhanced grant. Moving ahead, demolition assistance, we did bump it up from 25 to 35,000, ADA upgrades from 10 to 20,000. And utility upgrades have increased to $20,000. Commercial signage, we did expand to the Route 355 corridor and to Old Town previously that had just been for office buildings for tenants, Tony refreshment memories that had, were taking blocks of space more than 15,000 feet, I believe. It was for large blocks of office space that it was previously limited to, and we have expanded it now again to 355 and Old Town. We eliminated the multi-tenant requirement in these two targeted areas, and it does promote improvement of appearance of older commercial areas. We added a new category specifically here for Old Town, a grant of up to $10,000 can help deteriorate in facades and general aesthetics in the CBD. Which grants, which companies did we help specifically this year? C B H Health, we did award $50,000 to C B H Health. This is a company that was founded in 1996 and specializes in central nervous system disorders. They moved into almost 20,000 feet on 9318 Gaither Road, tenant fit up grant. They put 1.2 million into the space. They're complete and in with 40 jobs. We toured it recently. Beautiful facility. FIFA, this is a sub hub certified business. They actually moved into the space because it was within the city and actually the county's last remaining hub zone. And this is a company that provides project and IT management support. They took about 3,100 square feet of newly leased space at 702 Russell. They put in $100,000 and they employ 83 people.
Do we still have a hub zone or?
Yes.
Okay.
We do. It will be revisited after the census, but that's not a local decision, it's federal.
Right.
All right.
Biotech Labs, Inc., grant for 15384 was awarded to assist with improving about 5,100 square feet of office and lab space on Perry Parkway. That is an offer that has been extended to the company. It has not been decided yet whether they're taking the space, but it has been extended for them to consider as they consider locations. And they are anticipating about a quarter million dollars in investment. Customer First Renewables, this, two grants totaling 11974 was awarded to assist with full renovations to approximately 6,000 square feet of office space at 9801. It's a tenant fit up, they're putting in about 115,000, it's under construction. They've got 20 jobs, but what's interesting about them is that they were the first recipient of the county's MOVE program, which helps to attract new businesses to Montgomery County. They were the first one to receive it three years ago, and they had only taken about 1,000 square feet and came with five jobs from DC. So they're expanding nicely. G Financial Services, we awarded a small grant for about $5,100. They are an accounting and financial services firm. 41 North Frederick Avenue, which continues, it's a guardian owned property, and they continue to reinvest in this Class B office building. Tenant fit up, they put about $45,000 in it, small, three jobs. Alt immune, a much bigger deal. Grant for $50,000 was awarded to Alt immune. This is a clinical stage immunotherapeutics biotech company. They're improving about 14,000 feet of newly leased office and lab space at 910 Clopper. They're putting in $2.1 million. It's under construction, they've got almost 60 jobs. So a recap, about 145,000 was awarded in the prior fiscal year. Total private investment supported was about 3.8 million. Almost 50,000 feet of space was improved in the city and 213 jobs were supported. Just some quick observations about the past year. Six toolbox grants awarded in the FY17 represents the fewest since 2010, but jobs and private investment supported was about average. Brokers, property owners, site selectors, and public partners all know about the program quite well, and the city continues to use it for the right opportunities. In fact, several of them not mentioned here are, at least three or four are under, have not, formal offers have not been extended to these companies, but there are companies that are applying for these monies and they're under consideration. Regionally, absorption of office and lab space has slowed. Uncertainty at the federal level is certainly part of that cause, but also, as we talked about earlier, lab space availability is at historic lows. And the program continues to achieve its objectives, which include supporting stable, well-paying jobs and reducing the city's inventory of empty and obsolete space. Unemployment rate's about 3.4% and our vacancy rate's about seven. As for the Opportunities Fund, established in 2010 to support unique business development opportunities, we had one big award in the past year. Grant for $75,000 was awarded to St. Gobain Performance Plastics to support tenant improvement costs associated with the company's relocation and expansion of its local facility to 50 West Watkins Mill Road. The company invested more than $9 million towards costs associated with improving 37,000 feet of space for its regional manufacturing, product development, and administrative facility. And the company agreed by way of this agreement to maintain a workforce of at least 28, hire another 30, which Neil, I think they told us at the tour they had already done. So they've already met their, their thresholds. And in fact, they recently.
That's not counting robot employees.
Correct. This is human. They did lease another block of space on Professional Drive to further support their efforts here in the city. So investments to date from both programs, the toolbox has awarded 64 grants totaling almost 1.2 million with over 1,000 jobs supported. The Opportunities Fund has awarded eight grants at about 1.5 million, nearly 1,800 jobs supported, and over a half million square feet of office and lab space secured or improved.
Investments to date means from inception of our program 10 years ago to now?
Seven years.
Six years ago.
Six years ago, right.
Twenty ten. Yes.
Yeah, Tom, thanks for the presentation. These are, these are fantastic numbers. I've been watching this, these programs since you first came on board. And sort of in the back of my head, the little back of the napkin calculation that happens in, in my brain, it's like roughly, it, a close to the average of $1,000 of investment per job, per good paying, steady, reliable job in the city of Gaithersburg. And we talk about, you know, a couple of thou, you know, two, three thousand jobs added to the city through these programs. And I realize we're just, we're sort of adding icing to the cake in terms of our budgets may not be enough in and of itself to make, have a company like St. Gobain to make a decision about locating here. But we're really, I really feel like, like you and Sharon are doing such a good job of vetting the opportunities and investing our resources wisely. I couldn't be happier with how this is going. It really, it really is great. And I appreciate, I appreciate sort of the statistics and going through the companies and, and hearing how they've done and how many jobs have been here. It's always a good, good night when we hear that report. So thank you very much. Neil, you look like you're raring to go.
I am, just a little bit. First of all, echoing what Judd said, this is great. You know, we like, love the jobs and the, and the companies coming in. You know, one statistic that was shared with me when I first joined the council that was surprising because down county, people look at Gaithersburg as, as a bedroom community. And in fact, it turns out that we are actually a job center. There are more jobs in Gaithersburg than there are employees, workers. And so we actually are attracting people. And, you know, given the state of traffic congestion in this region, the more we can have good jobs in the city that people don't have to go very far for is a good thing. You know, getting the mix of, of jobs and housing and retail is, is great. We don't want to just have one and not the other. Quick question for you. My understanding is that these funds that we're, that we've been pulling money out of for these companies were, were funded, they're basically like reserve buckets of money, they don't go out of our annual budget. How are we doing? Is it time to replenish at some point or how's your, how's your bank balance?
I would say our, we were sufficiently replenished in the prior budget year. It was, as I said, a bit of a slower than average year with awards. So at present, I would say that we are sufficiently funded. But ask me again in six months after these present applicants are vetted and some other deals are considered, I may have a different answer.
So you have some hot prospects on the horizon? Is that what you're trying to tell us?
Tony, look like Tony wanted to jump in here.
Just that, at budget time, we'll be prepared also to tell you where we've begun sweeping the unexpended funds from the toolbox annual allocation into a reserve fund, a formal reserve fund. Previously, we had just simply basically left purchase orders open, but now we're sweeping those, which we don't do with almost any other accounts. So it's actually grown a little bit. And we're, I think we're about a year ahead in toolbox funding, plus whatever you guys decide to put in, in the spring. And then the Opportunities Fund is still in seven figures.
The good news just keeps on coming. Thank you.
I would just say, I won't answer your question specifically with all due respect about prospects that we're, we're working with, but I will say what's been nice about having this pool of incentive funds available, kind of as, as Henry Bernstein alluded to, the region knows about it, the county, the state, prospects, business owners, property owners, brokers, they, they know about this pool of money. And so there, there's not much need to highlight it more than we do. They know it's here. And when prospects are in the Montgomery County market and they've identified sites in Gaithersburg, either with our help or through a broker, we are almost always at the table with, with the state and the county. And that, that's a nice position to be in, especially for a jurisdiction of Gaithersburg size, that we're, we're negotiating, playing ball with, with the big boys and girls at the table. So this has allowed us to be a contender. Like you said, it's not as much as the state and the county contribute to these deals, but there have been circumstances where it has made the difference in securing an important tenant. And there are several more on the line where we hope it makes the difference.
Great. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tom, for the presentation. All great news. If it will take a toolbox grant to get Amazon to come here, I'm all for you offering a toolbox grant.
You might need a bigger toolbox.
No, seriously, you know, economic growth, economic development with the city is our lifeblood. Bringing jobs home i- is better than having folks commute and us being a bedroom community. So I appreciate all the work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you, sir.
Mike?
I'll echo that. You know, when we made this decision, you know, however many years ago it was, everybody, most other municipalities were cutting back and not putting it up, making these efforts. I think we made a big statement. I think regionally, statewide, and nationally, when I talked about this at National League of Cities, people were astounded that we would be able, that we would be willing to kind of take this risk. I think the payoff, though, dollar for dollar has been met. So, and I think clearly. So, I, and I think clearly, the, the community of businesses that would bring jobs here and bring their businesses here is, they certainly know about it. But I would say, it's not just the, and even though, in terms of the dollar amounts from these two funds that we can offer, the other things that we offer, I think, that have been very important, is the staffing that we provide in terms of permitting and approvals, planning approvals, et cetera, that, that actually save people as much money as they might get from a, businesses, as much money as they might get from a Toolbox grant as well. So, I think it's, it's the overall cost of doing business that makes this attractive, and I think this is kind of the carrot at the beginning, but I think the rest of that, you know, how this is wholly, this effort is integrated across the board, it includes our, our planning department and everything else. And certainly, those are the, I think, kind of comments that we've heard from businesses that has decided to come here, they just said, it's, it's so much easier to do this kind of thing in Gaithersburg than it is in some other city that begins, ends with an E, so, or, or other parts of the, even parts of the county, I think, that they'd said that, too. So, it'd be nice if we had more, more lab space available, more potential lab space available, but, so, anyway, thank you for the hard work and the thorough report and the letting us know that we're, we're okay with the fund right now.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just, it would be remiss if I didn't say, well, we appreciate, Sharon and I both appreciate the compliments and our stewardship of this program. We are appreciative of a current council that continues to fund and support this initiative so that we can work with these businesses and these opportunities as they land in our lap or we go find them. For the prior council and mayor who got behind the concept to begin with, and frankly, city manager prior, economic development director who, who actually started this before I got here, we've made amendments to it, we've enhanced it, but, you know, like I said, like you said, the foundation was created long before we were here, we're just happy to continue.
Not long before, but?
No, but still.
Well, you know, the other thing that the council, the previous councils did is we made the decision to have a, your position, and that was a big investment, too, I think. And then when we added to it, that was another thing, and I think that the attention that, that focus position has been able to bring to it, I think, has been very important as well.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Ditto.
Yvette?
Ditto, but one quick question. So, for your Toolbox modifications for the commercial signage, now that you've expanded at Route 355 and Old Town, have you, has anybody contacted you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We are working with an Old Town business for, I won't mention who, but they, they, we are helping them with their application, too, so that it's submitted correctly. But yes, they're, they are aware of the opportunity, and some are seeking the funds.
Very good. Do we have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic? Not seeing any? Well, Tom, we thank you very much for all three of the last presentations.
Thank you.
As a reminder, we have no meeting next week or the following week. We ask that all residents get out there and vote on November 7th. We will have our special session on November 13th for the certification of results in the Swearing Inn, and the next regular session of Mayor Council will be Monday, November 20th, 7:30 PM, right here at City Hall. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.